Executive session and coming back into open session, so please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start with public comment. Is there anybody here to make a public comment? Come on up and just tell us who you are and your address.
Good evening. My name is Megan O'Neil and I live at 65 Russell Street. I'm speaking as a private citizen and parent of a child in the special needs, the special education program. I'm also a board member of the North Andover Special Education Parent Advisory Council, or NACPAC. I'm excited for and incredibly supportive of the use of ARPA money to fund a special education audit. The results and implementation of recommendations from a comprehensive special education audit will make an impactful impact on a significant portion of our student population. That being said, I would be remiss to not publicly note that there are currently four open meeting law complaints outstanding against the school committee, specifically surrounding how they treated the creation of the subcommittee to facilitate a special education audit, and the lack of transparency noted in the school committee agendas regarding the discussion of a special education audit. Given these complaints, as well as the sparse nature of the school administration's application for ARPA funds, I would ask the select board to gain additional information publicly about the use of the requested funds. Again, I am incredibly supportive of a special education audit and the use of ARPA funds for this audit, but given the current circumstances, would appreciate further information. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. I'm Joe Hicks, 49 Bradstreet Road. I am a member of the school committee, but I'm here tonight as a private citizen. One, as a parent of a young child on IEP, as well as thank the select board and the town manager for approving the application and putting that before the board tonight to consider allocating money through ARPA for a special education review. Also, I'd like to ask the select board to vote in favor of Tina Klein's application for banners commemorating Black History Month on the Old Town Common. This will help build a community that is dedicated to inclusion and acceptance and growth, and I think that is what is best for our community and for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? In the interest of time, we're actually going to hold off on our first presentation for a moment and move ahead to our consent items and I'll list them all off. We'll vote all at once. So, we are looking to accept a donation in the amount of $3,000 from Lowell Five for Public Safety, accept a donation in the amount of $1,500 from Schwab Charitable Fund for the new senior center, accept a donation in the amount of $1,000 from Fidelity Charitable Donor Advice Fund and the Cormier family, accept the Green Community Grant in the amount of $139,993, and accept the MIAA Rewards Grant in the amount of $15,709, and accept the donation from Arlene and Robert Cox in the amount of $50 to the fire department.
I would move approval of the acceptance of all of these consent items. I just have, I just have one quick question. The Maya Rewards, is that for us attending the classes, the Maya classes, is that where that money is coming from? Or is that just a reduction in our insurance?
Some of its classes, we also receive it for other things as well, like for instance, if the police department does certain types of trainings, et cetera, we can get rewards for that as well. And the funding is being used for public safety training, is being used for DPW training and office staff training.
So for the, for the most part, it's when we take courses, whether we go to the conference or other courses, we get money back?
Yeah, we could choose to use-
Or a deduction in our insurance?
We could use, choose to use those rewards to reduce premiums, and we also can choose to use them for grants, and we're choosing to use them for grants.
Okay, thank you. So again, I would-
Okay.
And I would second.
I have approval and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's unanimous. We are happy and grateful for all of these donations.
A lot of money, when you add it all up.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Which really is, okay, we're going to move back to our new business. We have Kathy and Ryan from Gale Associates here tonight to present the final draft of the field master plan, so welcome.
Welcome.
Thanks. Again, my name's Kathy Herbl. I'm project manager for Gale Associates, which we conducted the townwide fields master plan study. And Ryan with me is the staff engineer supporting me with the efforts with data collection, development of plans and such. So just to get into it, the townwide master plan, we actually evaluated 17 different town field sites, which actually included 39 separate fields for various options and conditions, as far as leading from turf conditions up to potential improvements, what the existing amenities, benches, fences, things along those lines are like. Just a quick review of our scope that we had. Like I said, we did background investigations for each of these sites. Again, we went out documented by photos and such, the conditions, looking at things like field geometry, sun orientation for play, playability. Again, looked at the, the various amenities on the sites, dugouts, benches, as I said. We developed mass GIS mapping for each of those facilities for, for the town's behalf, as well as looked at things along as environmental constraints and neighborhoods in the facilities, things that any development or improvements may impact. The programming development and needs assessment was really the nitty gritty of the master plan, where we sent out questionnaires to the various stakeholders, which included the high school, the various youth sports, as well as the high, the seniors. We spoke with all of them. We sent them questionnaires to collect data on usage, who's using what fields for what sports, to try to combine, figure out what exactly the town has going at all the various fields. We also met with the various groups. We met with the high school, the seniors, we met with the field committee, and, and also, we had a community open meeting one evening to just get input. What we did from that effort was collect, like I said, data for all the uses, different age groups, right, you know, youth all the way up through high school, and receive that data, as well as just got input on what people would like to see, what people think need to be done, what are some of their concerns at some of the field, and try to bring that all together. We did also do some summary work on the maintenance being conducted in the town. Right now, it's being conducted, supported by the youth groups, but the town also has maintenance services, as well as the school, and we took a look at that, which I'll get into a little bit later. Then compiling all the data that we have, what we look at is where's, where's the field needed, where the field needs and wants. We try to work the two together and came up with a couple of conceptual plans to try to address as much as we can, to present costs, as well as, like I said, meet the demands. And then, of course, we've compiled all of this into our master plan report, like I said, which includes the field evaluations, all the data collected, all the meeting minutes, all the questionnaires, and then, you know, obviously, our summary and our recommended concept plan. So just quickly, you know, just to give you a sense, this is a standard form that Gale Associates uses to evaluate the existing facilities when we go out, and like I said, we document it all through photos, look at constraints, drainage issues, anything that we think could be improved at the various sites. And Ryan was the one who went out and did all 39 fields.
So what do you think of our town? Seeing how you've been all over.
He knows the way around. So, all right, just next slide, Ryan? Oh, sorry, you're on it. Whoops, sorry. Just a couple of fields that we, basically, working with the, the town master plan committee, we basically eliminated from our evaluation or consideration for improvements, is the four elementary schools. The, the turfs are in poor condition and would need a lot of work. There's limited space for like regulation fields at most of those schools. And also, it's my understanding, the town can't really use the field until all the school programs are over, so it's very limited what, what's available anyway. But it is listed as a last resort per the field committee's request. If, you know, they absolutely have to find a field, one of these fields would be those. But we, in regards to our analysis and stuff, we did not consider these fields. So just in the program development and needs assessment, as I said, we sent questionnaires out to the various stakeholders. We obtained the field data uses and such, compiled that data from all the input. Needs assessment, we, again, just identified that, we'll get into that in a couple minutes with a little detail. What we also do is do an equivalent, equivalence of the, the field usage, where we'll get into a little bit more, but like a soccer field, a game, a normal game for a soccer field does not take the beating that a normal field will take, say, for a football game. So we kind of set equivalent factors so that we're comparing everything to the same. Just some of the standard stakeholders meeting comments that we received was, the field committee was obviously scheduling is an issue for practices, there's lack of field, parking was a big one. High school, one of the biggest comments was the baseball field. It's our understanding, North Andover has a really good baseball team and not such a good field, so that, that was iterated numerous times. Turf field, you know, iterate, the high school iterated some of the, the coaches that obviously a turf field and additional lights up there could really make a difference. And community stressed restrooms, playgrounds, adequate parking at all the facilities, you know, to address people with little kids, his big brothers playing soccer, whatever, to give them something to do. And the seniors really would like walking pass and pickleball was a big one for them. So, again, just a few more tidbits that we got out of the questionnaires, you know, that the current fields are suffering due to the overuse, which is, you know, why we're trying to address ways to, to help that. Many of the fields share, you know, are shared by various programs. I guess there was an Osgood Landing facility that was eliminated, and there was, you know, that took a, a large chunk out of field availability. There was a lot of support for synthetic turf fields, lit fields, and just to note that, you know, they, that we need high maintenance to, to keep these facilities up. So with that, we'll just, we'll start with the, just to give you a sense of, this is what we call our raw data. The top one is just, like I said, it's the list of the fields are across the top, and then the various sports and different age groups are down the, the left-hand column. But, as I said, we collected all the data that was provided from the various stakeholders and tried to tally that all up, all the uses. We then, as I talked about, that equivalent factor, which is the lower table, which, where we try to just kind of even out the uses for the fields based on the use. And just to make it a little bit easier for you to understand, this is our, our summary of the various fields, the various sports that are using it, and the 250-year uses, that is a recommended amount of time, a, a well-maintained grass field should be used per year. It's 250 hours per year, and that's that line going across. So as you can see, there's several fields in the town that exceed that, and obviously the conditions of the field, it becomes evident. So then what we do is we take that, we take the total uses to the various types of fields, then we divide it by that 250 and come up with the average uses per field, and come up with what we called our field deficit. And based on our findings, we're short a couple of baseball fields, the 60 and 70-foot diamonds, as well as a, a nice 90-foot baseball diamond, and we are approaching needs in regards to what we call a multipurpose field, G8, which is a full-size multipurpose like soccer field, 210 by 330 feet. So putting-
Previous slide, please.
Sure. Which one, the, the tables? Yep.
I don't see, oh, it is over there.
It's at the second one.
It's well overused.
It is a little hard to read.
Look behind you, it's easier.
Yeah, is there football? Let's sit on there. I don't see football on there. Oh, you football, there is.
Yep.
Never mind. All right, so I gotta get my glasses.
Yeah. As I said, it was more, we're just trying to depict, you know, the, the shortage of the field, so-
Could you also remind me if you included the field, the Rexplex at the middle school?
The Rexplex, we included their program only in our analysis, but we did not, it's not, is part of our evaluation.
Okay. So like that multipurpose field, when it gets built, will fill one of those deficits?
It's softball.
Two rec tables there, and the, but the turf, if they are, if they do go in as turf fields, then they would be-
Then they'd be-
Maybe sort of, if one turf field kind of counts as like three grass fields, if it's lit and stuff like that.
Okay. When it gets built. When it gets built.
So working through the various input and such, we kind of set some priorities that we're going to try to address. Additional turf field and lighting, provide better amenities at the various town fields, improve parking where we can, provide a state-of-the-art 90-foot baseball diamond. They'd like to get high school softball off of McAvoy and back at the high school, and what we can do to do that, and then obviously, that opens McAvoy for other, other teams. Meet our seniors' needs for walking and, walking trail and pickleball, and then also, just also to try to, any other way to accommodate the demands and deficiencies that we identified. So one of the, we, we did concept plans, basically, for all the various fields, but the ones we focused on, working with the, the master plan committee, we started with McAvoy, being that, first off, it wasn't a, it, it wasn't a big cost as a good start, and we felt that it's improving the parking and such met pretty much the whole community, the walking trail as well, but also trying to put in some pickleball for, to meet the senior needs. And what's nice with this one, if it starts, again, it's, it's not as costly as the couple you're going to see in a minute, but also, there's no environmental constraints, there's no permitting, so, you know, it could be done fairly quickly and with limited-
It was just done less than 10 years ago. This was totally redone.
Isn't that-
But we're adding, we're adding the pickleball court and the walking trail that the seniors requested, since now the senior center's going to be next to it.
I thought there was a walking trail around it. When it was originally, when it was done, I forget the number of years ago, but there was specifically a walking trail that was put around it.
There is one. This is, and to improve it and make it ADA and, you know, level and friendly.
I'm surprised it wasn't at that level when it was done, because it wasn't done that long ago, so.
I know, is it broken? Had been redone when that was with the-
With the gas.
The gas company and that. That one I know is more recently, okay.
Did they redo the field, or did they just, like I know they added the playground and stuff, but they-
The fields used to be oriented much differently. There was another field over on the upper left-hand corner there, and there was a basketball court in the other right-hand corner, so it was much different.
Yeah, this is more of a sort of minor re, sort of reconfiguring as opposed to a whole redo. So it's sort of just taking that half basketball court that's there and making it more towards the pickleball, since the senior center's going in, and then just sort of, again, just sort of doing sort of a once-over on those paths, as opposed to redoing it from scratch.
Okay, that's a good point. The senior center, yeah, that's a, that's a good point.
The next one is the proposed, this one's a little bit, a bigger scope. We're actually looking at it in two phases. The first would be a complete synthetic turf baseball and multipurpose field with athletic lighting. Just, again, with the athletic light, you, you meet the demands, we're meeting some of the deficiencies. And then the, the second phase would be to get the softball incorporated into the turf over at the practice field, which is adjacent to the baseball field. This would be out a little ways, because the turf was replaced in 2017 at the practice field, so usually synthetic turf fields last anywhere from 10 to 14 years. So once it reaches its life, it'd be seven years or so from now, that, that that would, you know, fall into place. And the, just in regards to constraints and such associated with, with this proposed project, we do have wetlands and such around there, so we would definitely need either an NOI or an RDA from the Conservation Commission to move ahead.
The turf would best address the drainage on the baseball field?
Absolutely, yeah, because the turf field, that you're redoing the whole drainage base, piping, stone base and such, so it would definitely improve. Another facility we looked at, and a lot of this came through the field committee, as well as the community input, that, the thought that this could be a, a nice sports complex for the town. It's kind of out of the way, you don't have a lot of neighbors. We do have some environmental constraints, but we did meet preliminarily with the Conservation Agent to get her input on whether we felt we'd have any real issues, and being that most of the area is already disturbed, her feeling was, you know, we could, you know, make it happen, obviously, there'd be permitting and conditions and such. But this includes two, a smaller and a full-size synthetic turf field with lights, multipurpose fields, but we also worked in a small baseball and softball, which would be incorporated right into that turf. We've upgraded all the parking, as well as provided a playground, or proposed an area for a playground under this scenario. And, again, as I said, there would be environmental constraints. The, I think the biggest thing with a lot of the parking at the facilities is if there were just lines, it's, you know, most of them are gravel or whatever, and it's, you know, it'd be much more efficient if, you know, with the striping and such. So a lot of the other fields, we did look at, like I said, we did more detailed plans, pretty much on all of the, the facilities, and, you know, just putting in some parking and striping is a, is a big plus, so.
Make your own spot doesn't work very well. Is there a proposed, like restroom facility here?
Because it-
Yeah, we talked about that, and then-
The DPW doesn't think that it's going to be possible.
Why?
On that site, because there's no water.
There's no water?
Yeah. We'd have to put in septic, and then that gets tricky with the environmental issues, so perhaps more elaborate restrooms, or, you know, porta-potties could be considered. So as I said, we did do layouts for all the facility, I don't know if we've flipped through them all, but, so just coming away from what we've worked through with, with the town master plan committee, with the priority that we think we can, you know, do something fairly quickly and get rolling on the McAvoy Park and those improvements. Second priority right now would be the Phase 1 for the high school, which is the baseball multipurpose with lighting. Phase, next step would be Sharpener's Field, trying to get that going with the multipurpose, get that complex going. And then the, the fourth phase would be Phase 2 of the high school with the, the turf replacement over on the practice field, incorporate the softball, and also possibly upgrade lighting at that whole, at both the existing turf fields, the stadium, as well as the practice field, bring them up to LED and things along those lines to be more energy efficient and such, so. And then just the last thing, just that we hit on, it's just kind of a little on the side note, but in the maintenance and the research, we went through, again, sent questionnaires to the various staff and such, working on the maintenance, the youth groups, working through the field committee as well, and just generated kind of who's doing what maintenance, just kind of as a, a data collecting at this point, and with the hope, we also provided recommended maintenance and such in the future, some budgeting cost assumptions for the future, as well as an inclement weather policy under proposed conditions. So that's really where we're at, and we hope to wrap up the final, final, final shortly and hand it over to Lori, so.
I'll just add just two things. We haven't gotten the actual fund report yet, but timing-wise, we wanted to have them come in today, just because we're voting on the capital improvement plan today, and the initial funding for design is actually in there. And two, we are going to be having a public meeting as well to resent the report on top of this report, but that will be in the near future, so.
Got any questions? No?
It's a lot of fields.
Yeah. It's a lot of work. It's a lot to, a lot to maintain, you know? You've got some lovely facilities, and they just need a little TLC.
A little love, yeah. They get used, though. I mean, as you can see, they really get used, and I think that we need to protect them, and I know that some sports are always jockey, jockeying for field time, so.
I agree, and it's, it really is an integral part of, of young kids growing up, is to be able to play and be athletic. It, it actually helps the brain, when you're using parts of your body, it frees your brain as well as, as it does playing a musical instrument. And it's, and it just seems like, and maybe I'm wrong, but gym time seems to shrink, so it's actually a very good thing for these kids to get out there and learn how to play and work with each other as a team, so.
We also were told through the adult leagues that they've suffered, I know the adult baseball team, they, they don't get a lot of practice. They get the space for games, but that's about it. And also, I guess there was, once upon a time, an adult soccer league, which kind of petered out because they couldn't get the field time. So obviously, you know, any of these improvements would, would help possibly bring those programs back as well.
Especially lighting, right? If we can use them at night.
Yes, yeah, it just gives you, you know, a turf lit field gives you three times the use of a, a grass field at, you know, with no lighting, so.
Just another comment. I know we said the schools' fields are off the table, which is fine, I get that, but I think some work may need to be done on those, because when you take some of these fields offline for those upgrades, they may be offline for a year or two years, and sometimes, in my experience, when we did like McAvoy Field, it took a couple of years for the grass to grow, and, and I know we're talking about turf.
Right.
But, you know, we may have to do some work on those fields to make them as turnaround space, if you will, where they, they need to be utilized while these other fields are offline, or else we are in a real bind for field space.
Right. I know there's a couple of them that are very small, there's very limited play area, but there's, there's one or two that has a little more potential for, you know, a, you know, a multipurpose type field.
Yeah, even if it's like young children's soccer.
Yep.
Softball, baseball, those things.
Yep.
I know we've had to use those in the past, especially the Kittredge and other fields for turnaround space.
Right.
I think we should even look at it for the kids for recess. I mean, some of, I know Atkinson in particular, I mean, that's uneven ground, and the kids are out there running around, and maybe it's something we can talk about.
Does the scope of this final report include any recommendations about the maintenance piece of it? I think that is, okay.
It's at the bottom.
Okay. Well, more than, more than the cost, like-
Yeah.
That's a big-
We're eyeing when we came up with the idea for the study, because long-term wise, the way we're doing it, well, so generous, doesn't really, isn't really a long-term plan, if we want to maintain the fields in a way that they will last.
That's right. If we're gonna, if we're going to invest in the fields, we want to make sure that-
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we gave recommendations on, you know, maintaining grass field, turf fields, and, and all of that, and what's, you know, what's recommended and how to deal with it.
Including, yeah, the rest and all of that, so, okay.
It's all in there, so.
Any other comments? No? We appreciate, yeah, thank you so much for coming in, and this is exciting.
Well, thank you.
Hope to do it.
No, thank you.
Well-
It's been fantastic to work with. It's, it's been really great and very receptive to all the comments at the different meetings that we've had, so.
That's good, that's good.
We appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you to Laurie.
And thank you, Laurie, always. Thank you to Laurie, always. Great. We're going to move on to item B under new business, which is a vote to adopt the capital improvement plan for fiscal year '24 through '29. So a few weeks ago, we were able to meet with the other boards, and everybody got to have a discussion and take a look at it, but Melissa, do you have any?
Yeah, no changes.
Anything to add?
And what we had in the, that presentation is what you will see in your book. The funding sources have not changed. The plan is to use free cash. You would be the first board to vote. The FINCOM has not voted yet, and you typically are first.
So do you want to have comments, questions?
No, it was a great presentation that you did to the board, and I think a lot of questions were asked at that, that night, and I think a lot of it was clarified, and so with that, I would make a motion to approve the capital plan for fiscal year '24 through '29.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? I just, again, want to thank people for the time and effort. I know a lot of diligence goes into figuring out how to best prioritize the capital budget. It's a very formulaic approach and kind of sets the level playing field, so I appreciate all of the due diligence that goes into that.
It's a long process, and I appreciate the, the main-
It's a long process, and I appreciate the, the maintenance that you're addressing, the HVAC stuff, that, that a lot of times gets under the radar and doesn't get picked up in the paving and the drainage and all that sort of stuff, so. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Looking forward to see it play out. Okay, Item, Item C is to vote to approve ARPA funding in the amount of $300,000 for the design of the downtown streetscape improvement, so can you give us a little?
Yeah, Ashley Jean and Ryan is here to speak on this item.
All right. Hi, Jean. I didn't see you over there.
Employee of the year.
Hi, Jean, employee of the year.
I don't think she was talking to me last week after that, but that's okay.
Embarrassing for you.
Congratulations, Jean, and thank you.
Right.
And as she sets up, I just want to say quickly, so Andrew had created some slides for me, just to let you all know, that we started with 9.3 million, we've committed 5.4 million, and as of today, we still have 3.9 million left.
Thank you, that was, yes.
Thank you.
Last number, that's great.
Yes. All right, Jean.
All right, so that's a good segue for me, because the 300,000 is a portion of the amount needed. To supplement that, we would look to pull money from our Columbia Gas Discretionary Fund in the amount of 325,000, so it brings the total cost to 625. The Columbia Gas Fund still has 765,000 in it, so this will drop it down to 440 remaining in that fund. This gets the ball rolling, right, so it's the design and engineering for all the streetscape improvements that were adopted within the downtown master plan improvement project.
Is this for the whole, I know you had asked in the requests, like, to break it down into different sections, but will this cover the whole?
So, we would foresee construction being broken down into different phases, but this would be the engineering from Sutton Street to Merrimack.
Okay.
Downwater and high, so it would be the, the whole scope, or, and it includes design and engineering for underground utilities. Doesn't mean that decisions were made at this time, but it would be incorporated into this scope.
I appreciate that, yeah.
That's a pretty good, that's a pretty good length. I mean, that's the other side of, of St. Michael's Church. That's a lot.
Yeah.
There's a lot to do.
There is a lot to do.
I think one of the things we see a lot of and hear a lot of is, you know, what's going on with Main Street, what's happening, why is Main Street, you know, we've got a lot, some storefronts that are empty, not so many, but we have a few that are empty, and I think this is a great step in getting, addressing concerns and getting addressing, you know, those vacancies, and once it starts, and I know this is something you've always talked about, is, you know, trying to get common themes down there and, and, you know, dressing up the downtown, and I think this is a great start.
Yeah, it's a long way, and we have some momentum. I mean, I know it's been several years now, but the Heavenly Donor Building was, you know, invested in quite a bit. Red Street on Main, Eyes on Main across the street. We have a potential mixed-use development at the former Santana Bank, so this is kind of us, we have to invest too. And, and I say that there's over 40,000 remaining in Columbia Gas, and we've talked internally, what I'd love to see in the end, once we start committing funds and, and get a little bit of buy-in, a storefront improvement plan that we could help supplement to try to bring other properties up to speed.
We did that many, many years ago. We, we had a plan, and we, there was an offer of some storefront improvement, but at that time, the merchants really just couldn't even afford this, the minimal amount, so it's, it's very exciting. But I would, I would like to comment that the theme of the different construction that we have in the downtown, there's a harmony to it. It blends. The, the new projects actually, they blend with one another, and-
So, we have design guidelines. They were installed back in 2007, and a lot of people are really unaware of that, but when we have a major redevelopment like that, we make sure that they see those design guidelines. And separate from this project, another master plan goal was to look at downtown zoning, and so that effort is underway, and those are, those are going to look to upgrade those design guidelines, to again, have that consistency, but also have variations.
Yeah, it has to have a style.
Things have changed.
But it's, it's, it's light, it's bright, and some of the, the floral arrangements that the merchants have undertaken on their own, it's, it brings a lot to the street.
Yeah, I think Red Street on Main spurred a lot of that, because the area's just beautiful.
And across the street, at J and M.
Beautiful in there. And even-
J and M does a beautiful job.
Still call it the seniors market, but First and Main have implemented a lot of planters.
Yeah, the, the seniors have done a great job as well.
How long do you think the survey and the engineering will take?
It'll probably take a whole year.
Yeah.
The survey will be of ma, major undertaking?
We'll have to go for quotes, so we'll do a request for a proposal, and, yeah, I would imagine it's gonna take at least a year to do that effort.
Okay.
And if I could, if I have the opportunity, I want to introduce-
A little more embarrassing people.
No more embarrassing. I want to introduce Brian Keating. So, Brian started with us about two weeks ago, I believe. He is the Assistant Planner Director, so he primarily will probably pick up this effort to manage it.
Welcome.
Welcome.
And we got a project for you already.
If we fund it, we need you to fund it.
Well, I would move that the select board approve the use of ARPA funding in the amount of $300,000 for the design of the downtown streetscape improvement.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further comments? I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, congratulations.
Yes, and congratulations.
We're done.
Item D is to vote to approve ARPA funding in the amount of $40,000 for a special education audit. I think that perhaps, Dr. Mealy is here to talk to us about this, so thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
Happy to be here.
So, this was our first application for an ARPA project, and I wasn't sure how much detail was required in the application, and if there was not enough detail, I'll take responsibility for that. I did bring more information this evening, so that you can make an informed decision. So, as Megan said earlier, this is a comprehensive review that is done of our special education department. If we were doing a modified version, we might say, oh, we want you to look at this or that, but we're doing a comprehensive review, so we ask them, whoever comes in, to do everything, look at all aspects of our special education department, and to get feedback from our parents, from our staff, and whoever else is involved. But it includes and is not limited to the district referral process and patterns, inclusion and pull-out services, special education enrollment, achievement of students with IEPs, organizational structure, program and service offerings, roles and responsibilities, utilization of current professional development specific to special education and inclusion, overall strengths in any areas of programmatic and service needs, address any issues related to procedural practices, looks at the over-under identification of students with disabilities, pre-referral practices for both Tier 1 and Tier 2, professional development opportunities for all district personnel, administrative oversight of programs, related service providers, practices in procedures, and staffing needs, and capacity for co-teaching. So, like I said, they look at all aspects of it. And then the other question that came up was, how is the firm selected? And I've had some conversations with Lori. We will follow the 30B procedures and protocols that we're required to in order to hire firm, so we'll work on that together. And there was some question about, special education has a lot of exemptions in purchasing, but we got, we kind of drilled down a little bit, and when it says services, it's specific to students, services for students, so this doesn't fall under the exempt. We would have to do quotes. You can do a lot of different processes, but we'll follow the 30B regulations.
So, it doesn't, I think we have to follow the capital regulations.
Right, which are a little more stringent.
There are a little more stringent areas and not so much, the thresholds can be higher, but the process would be a little more stringent.
So, to bid with the request for proposals or- Oh, that's what I-
Whatever's required.
So, the scope will change a little depending on their responses, probably?
Probably not the scope. I wouldn't imagine, scope, the scope is what they do for comprehensive review, yes.
Okay.
We actually can't change the scope.
They can't, it has to, they have to send, we tell them what we want, and they send back the, based on that scope. Okay, get it. Yes, I knew that, I just-
How long do you think it will take?
Which part?
The, I guess the study.
It takes a while. It's comprehensive, and they have a lot of people to touch base with. I remember when they did the Walker Report, which was similar, years ago, it, it took a while. It takes months to complete.
Sure.
Yep.
If we're gonna do it, we want to do it right.
Exactly.
What do you expect of the report, as a report?
It's a, it's a comprehensive report, yes, with recommendations. It identifies strengths and weaknesses, areas that you could do. I can remember from the Walker Report, there were some programs we developed because we were lacking in those programs, and we had enough students that we could do it in-house rather than sending to another district or, or having those students go out of district.
I don't know the answer, and that's why I'm asking. Do they prioritize the needs when they put the report together, or?
No, they're assessing our delivery of services and our ability to provide for the students in our district.
And do they take into account the financial piece of it? Like, again, do they prioritize that you'll get your biggest bang for your buck with this amount, or this project, or anything like that? Do they, is it more than just an analysis?
Yeah, to an extent, so it's, it's more, it's, it's not as specific as that. It's more the information for us, and then we can decide what we can and can't do from the recommendations.
Okay, and did you want to speak to the, the woman who spoke earlier as to opening this up a little bit, or?
As to?
Just the special needs of the interest of the parents.
So, they are definitely involved during the review. Their feedback is critical to the success of the review.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate the clarification on all of the things that will be included, so it certainly, it seems like a very wise use of our money. We need to make sure that, you know, things are going well, and there's always room for improvement.
And you get a small amount of money to that, but a lot of numbers do, both current and future.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting. I forget what the Walker Report cost us. Could have been, you know, between 20 and 40,000, but one of the recommendations they talked about was an opportunity to partner with Andover for what we call our TOPS program. And the TOPS program saves us almost a million dollars a year, because students didn't want to stay at the high school. They wanted to go somewhere else, and that would have either been out of district, but because we were able to partner with Andover, our 18- to 22-year-old students go there, and it's an excellent program, and has saved us a tremendous amount of money over the years. So, that was a result of that review.
That's kind of what I was trying to get at, is, is there was a level of creativity, and, and gee, this, this is great, but this makes more sense for our town, or whatever. That's what I was, you did it much better than I.
Okay, other comments, or I will take a motion?
I will move that the select board approve the use of ARPA funding in the amount of $40,000 for a special education audit.
I have a, okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, Jim. Item E is the application of Danielle Brazil of Homegrown Lacrosse to use Osgood Street, Pleasant Street, Grape Pond Road, Stevens Street, and Harkaway Road for a road race on March 12th, 2023, from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM. Is anybody here to speak to that? Nobody.
I think this is one they've done in the past. I was seeing runners coming by my house, so I think this is-
They have to, okay. I was like, I don't remember this race.
I know the route is-
I don't think they've done it. It's not Knights-
They're using the same route that-
As Knights on the Run.
Oh, okay.
Originally, they had a different route, but then they realized that it would be easier to use the Knights on the Run.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's, yeah, location, right? It's not in the location.
It's like right at Homegrown, right, so just, so Knights on the Run starts in the driveway of the high school, so, close enough.
Stop by, sorry.
My only worry is that 9:00 to 10:30 is not enough time, but they've, is that similar to what?
I don't know if I can look up what Knights on the Run.
When Knights on the Run?
I thought she was gonna be there.
Okay.
When, in the application, I addressed parking, and it said DPW, Homegrown, and the high school, so do they, are they requesting use of it, or? Yeah. Very soon.
So, Knights on the Run looks like, if I'm reading this right, the race takes for 25 minutes? Okay, then that's, that's fine. We definitely took it a whole longer than that.
I'm not running it, that's for sure.
The first place person.
Yeah, in 25 minutes. I mean, some of us walk, I don't know, I'm like-
But-
Anyway, that would be my only, it's like, they think they're gonna have all very fast people.
So, do you want to extend the time until 11?
I think we could just extend the, give them an extra half hour, yeah, so there's no, no issue, so.
Madam Chair, I will move approval of the request of Danielle Brazil for Homegrown Lacrosse to use Osgood Street, Pleasant Street, Grape Pond Road, Stevens Street, and Harkaway Road for a road race on March 12th, 2023, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm gonna reach out to them about the parking. The issue's gonna be if we have a snowstorm.
Yes.
So, I will reach out to them about the parking at DPW.
March 12th could definitely go either way.
You never march, it goes away, right.
We have a snowstorm on March 12th, was 1993.
Is that true?
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
Right, they have to be able to run too.
Oh, all right.
You never forget those things.
Yeah, I mean, it's possible, so I will reach out to them just in case, because if there is a snowstorm, we could need our parking lot. It's also only like six spots, so.
It's not a lot of spots, no.
No.
But the high school would be-
High school's nice and big.
Yeah.
You'd have to like walk all the way.
I know.
Well, they're running, so I think it's fine.
So far. Okay, a motion and a second. Are you, all set? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Item F, the application of Tina Klein to install banners at the Town Common from February 1st, 2023 to February 28th, 2023, for Black History Month. So, Tina is here to talk to us about this. Thanks.
Hey, thank you for having me. My name is Tina Klein. I'm at, I live on Coachman's Lane, and this project is an extension of last year's project. You might remember that we came before you last year, and the banners that we created kind of overlapped with the 375th birthday, and all of the poles around the common were in use. So, last year, we displayed banners in municipal buildings. So, this year, we have expanded the number of banners that we have honoring African-Americans from 8 to 16, which means we can fill all of the poles that are around, around the common. And in addition to that, we have programs that we are in the process of finalizing, but will include a kickoff event on February 2nd, and off, and two authors are coming to speak about their books, and we will have also a movie showing that's being sponsored by the library. So, I'm happy that the program is going forward again this year and is expanding, and with me are two of my planning team folks, Michelle Phillips and Lynn Wenzel. So, so it was also good to have, have other people join our planning committee so that we could really expand the program. Yeah, so our request is to use the lamp posts surrounding the common from February 1st through the 28th. I know last year, when we had banners put up, the DPW installed the ban, put them up at the beginning of the month and took them down at the end of the month, so we would be requesting that assistance again this year.
The additional banners that you're putting up, are they more, are they, are they, the North Andover celebrates Black History Month, or are they more?
No, well, last year, we had eight individuals and eight of those program banners that set, and, and so we'll still have those 16 banners, but this year, we selected eight additional people. And so, we've already commissioned the artwork from Elevated Thought, an organization in Lawrence that does a lot-
Did a lovely job last year.
Yeah, and they, they did a bunch of murals at the youth center, so they've done a lot of artwork in town.
They're beautiful.
Yeah, so there are, there are eight additional people that are- So there are, there are eight additional people that are gonna be new this year. So, yeah.
Will you still have the QR codes?
We'll have the QR codes, yes. So on each signpost will be a QR code that will take the user directly to that person's biography. And I will be working with Sarah Brush soon to essentially use the same framework from the website that she put together last year, which was fabulous, and just update it with the new, new people and new biographies.
She hosts a great collaboration last year.
We were really excited to host all of them in the town buildings. We are hosting a few this year, I think, again.
That's true, yes. In addition to the ones around the common, the senior center asked for a banner again this year. There's gonna, there'll be one in the library and there'll be one in Town Hall again this year.
Very excited about. And just so the board knows, one of the things that we've asked Chris to look at is our flag policy because we have both her and attorney reached from KP Law have found some concerns in that. So we'll be bringing that before you in the February, March timeframe, which may affect this for next year, but we don't have any concerns for this year. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. Not currently, yeah.
I would just say thank you for all your work. I mean, it was so lovely last year.
Oh, good.
It really, you know, celebrates our diverse background and inclusion and everything we want to represent.
Yeah, and I really think that this year, they'll just be so much more visible. I mean, it did get a lot of visibility in the buildings and I, I heard good feedback from people that saw them in the buildings. So, but I'm excited for them to be around the common and for kids who are walking from school to the youth center to see them as well. So I'm happy about that.
We got a lot of positive feedback from employees too, just seeing them in the buildings and it was really amazing event.
I actually felt like there was a lot of buzz around town about them and I loved hearing that. So people really responded positively and I'm really excited to have Abby back again. So appreciate the hard work because it's, we know how hard it is.
Do we have the same artists?
Last year, there were five artists that designed the eight banners. And this year, I think one of, at least one of the artists is the same, but I think it's three artists that had done the eight banners. So, so it'll have the same theme, so they'll, some of them will, and they're the same artists, but they're, they're all very varied and which I think is what really makes them beautiful. I mean, one of the things I need to figure out is, I know there must be some map of the common because I walked around with a mapping software and dropped a pin at every pole and then noticed that the poles are actually numbered. Yeah, so because, so that I can, I knew there must be some because you've done those banner programs. People can say where they, so I'll need to figure out kind of how to communicate that, like where, where to place specific banners. So that's a piece that I don't know how to do yet.
They agree that, though.
I might even have a blank one, but there's lines that this is, this is where, you know, Smith would go or Jones would go or whatever.
Okay, great. So we'll figure that out.
Well, it makes sure that they get placed in the right spot.
Right.
Way of DPW, that they, they know where they go.
Yeah.
So.
I did not get a picture in my packet, though, of what a sample of the banner was going to look like.
There was.
Like attached, there was an attachment, right?
There was an attachment to the.
Oh, you mean I need two pairs of gloves?
It was the North Andover.
There, there, the image that I attached to the application was the program banner. But then I provided a link to the website that had all eight of the people. Yeah, so I was, yeah, I was hoping that you would be able to see those too.
Yeah, they're really, they're striking.
They really are.
They're all interesting. They're just all very interesting. And, and I think the artists really capture the essence of kind of what made that person, yeah.
Very nice, like great addition.
Do we have our historic person from many, many years ago who, who was black, a freed slave? What was it, Cato Freeman?
Yeah, Cato Freeman was in the first batch of banners that we did. So, so Cato Freeman's banner will be up again this year. So, you know, they're very durable so that we can use them year over year.
They are very durable. If she did, if Dawn did, if she used the same materials that we used, yeah, they're very, very durable. My problem was that, that sometimes they got hit by a truck or a plow.
Some things you can't avoid. Not on the common, yeah.
Not around the common. Well, actually, I take that back because one was hit, a wreath was hit at the common this year, which has never happened. But, and they hold up very well unless they hit the ground and get hit by a plow. So that, that is not gonna happen to you most likely.
We'll try to avoid that. I'd be happy to take a motion.
I will move this as a second order to approve the application from Tina Klein to install banners at the Town Common from February, February first to twenty twenty-three to February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three for Black History Month.
I have a motion. And a second. Any further discussion?
I, I will be voting for this, but I am very interested to see what some of that legal action did bring before other communities that might be somewhat prohibitive in the future.
I didn't catch what, I don't know what legal action we're talking about, so.
You're good for this year and then we'll take a look that we'll see.
Well, that, of our pilot, yeah, of our pilot policy.
Which we're working on to make sure that it's compliant with court decisions. That's, or, or establishing a policy. The only thing that I have to be really honest that I get concerned about, it's got nothing to do with your project. But in order to be inclusive, we could end up not being inclusive because there's only twelve months in a year. And as more groups come forward and want that full month, it could leave other really important organizations and groups out as well. So that's, I've spoken about that in the past. It has nothing to do with your interest. I think your design is great. I think all education is great, but we just want to make sure that we don't fill up all the spaces and leave other very important groups out.
Well, I was really excited last year. I mean, Melissa really helped to.
She did, and it was great.
Think out of the box because we were like, oh, my gosh, all of the poles are being used. And then we came up with something that was, you know, really a good plan B.
I agree, and I was thrilled.
Yeah, and it really morphed into, I mean, we really thought it was only ever gonna be around the common, but the, but the town buildings said, we'd like to host another banner. Are we gonna get a banner this year? I'm like, wow, that's, that's wonderful.
Isn't it amazing how contagious things like banners and wreaths and things like that tend to be when everybody wants to participate? So, no, it was great and she did, she thought right out of the box and I thought, that's great. I mean, it's, it's right there with the people, so.
I even got to learn how to put together the banner holder.
I actually do remember that.
Yeah, we had a screwdriver and everything. So we were very excited about it. It didn't break, it didn't fall down, so. No, we, we all love this project, so we're very excited to have it back this year.
Okay.
Okay, I had a motion in a second, so all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Well, thanks.
Nice to see you, Tina. Happy New Year. Thanks for giving me all this time to just talk about the project because it was, yeah, it's good. Thank you.
We're happy to hear about it. I know. We're down. All right. Our next item is licensing commissioning, so we, that's you. So I will take a motion to move into licensing. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Just give me a moment and here we go. And I actually, after my last VASCO where all the papers were all mixed up and I can't read five sheets at the same time, I, I numbered some of these not be scrambling like I was before. Okay, let's see. We are now in licensing. First item on the agenda is application from Eva's Farm Organic Butcher Shop LLC for a change of corporation name. Do we have anybody here from Eva's Farm and Butcher Shop? No? I don't know, what do you think? Do you think we should postpone it or just keep going?
It's a really simple, it's a really simple name change.
It is, they just took out one word.
They may not be organic anymore. Or not only organic, I'm guessing.
Isn't that kind of a good word?
Yes, right. I think so.
But, I'm sorry, what did you say?
I think maybe the word organic is just so restrictive.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe they, it's hard. Sometimes they can attribute that to pricey.
Yeah, exactly, that's true.
And I think that they actually talked about costs at wholesale prices, some, some add or something that I saw. Okay, so having said that, everything seems to, to be in order.
The application is in order.
And it does seem to be relatively simple, so any questions, comments, further discussion on this? Everybody ready? I'll take a motion.
I'll move approval of the name change from Eva's Farm Organic Butchery to Eva's Farm Butcher Shop.
I think, I think it is a good decision. I think it's just, it's just more direct and.
I'll second that.
And second, okay. Motion made and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And oppose? It is a unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda is application from Merrimack College for an entertainment license at the Church of Christ, the Teacher and Student Union. Welcome back. Just as long as there's a microphone and you identify yourself, you're good.
There we go, all right.
Nice to see you again.
It's good to see you all. Good evening. My name is Anthony Preston. I'm the Chief of Staff to Jeff Doggett, the Executive Vice President. You all know Jeff very well. He has been up here a couple of times talking about the upgrades we have made to Church of Christ, the Teacher, and also the new student union in the basement bowling alley esports, golfing simulator. So we are here tonight with our application for an entertainment license. We're really excited about the space. We're hoping to, we're eyeballing to open it to the students next week. They get back this weekend and into early next week, so. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have about the application.
Well, the one question I have is the conditional passing of the final walkthrough on January sixth. Did that happen?
It did, yes.
Okay.
Yes. And I checked with our Director of Facilities to make sure that it did.
Okay, did we, did we hear anything from the?
I was just pulling up the application.
Thank you.
Board, please, the hours of operation?
So the hours of operation, it depends on the day of the week. Generally, it's about seven thirty to one AM. One AM being that the downstairs bowling alley is more of a congregation area for students to go and bowl past time. It's also a place for people to have on the weekends who are under twenty-one, so trying to give them a space to hang out.
So that was kind of my concern. With, they're actually not our neighbors, they're Andover's neighbors in the noise level. Any, do we have any concerns about noise disruption? This is new, it's been in a church ever.
Yeah, 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 no. So, I mean, we have tested it out, tested the facilities out a few different times with a lot of the faculty's stress tests, more or less. I have actually gone upstairs into the church because I was curious about the noise that would be produced during bowling during the golfing simulator, which actually is not allowed. But you can't even hear it upstairs in the church. I don't know, there's, I, from what I hear, there's a ten-inch-thick concrete slab between the basement where the bowling alley is and the upstairs. But generally, no concerns for noise protruding outside of the building either. And it's located in a point of campus that there's a good buffer from the roads.
And this is a dry facility, right? With the exception of when you come in for special.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
So during these times, it will always be a dry facility.
Correct, yeah.
And we monitor.
Yep.
How many, how many folks will be working there to monitor the activities there?
To work there, I'm, I'm not sure off the top of my head, something I can get to you. I, I would think upstairs in Monica's Kitchen where it's kind of a grab-and-go selection of sandwiches, salads, soups.
I'm more concerned about people in the recreation area. Will there be like security, will there be police out there at one AM?
Yeah, yep, we, we always have police kind of around the area. But unless there would, there's an event, we wouldn't have a police detail there per se. But there are going to be workers there from open to close monitoring the facility.
Thank you.
Based on the record, everything appears to be closed out.
Okay, so we're good. You see anything else? I don't. I didn't see any either, but sometimes we get it by message.
Do you anticipate like music playing or?
Downstairs, we do, in the student union where the bowling alley is. We do have some TVs that during sporting events that, you know, will broadcast there. We are actually planning to do that for the divisional playoffs coming up in the next couple of weeks. So we already have a full slew of events that we have planned for the, the space down in the basement. Right now, so we're, yeah, yeah. He's our Vice President and General Counsel of the college.
So in the past, Mr. Doggett has talked about adding more buildings to that general area. Are you, do you foresee in any time soon that, you know, to touch upon the, the noise level, if there would be dorms or something right near the chapel?
Yeah, I think that's something we would absolutely explore. I think just to get a full, comprehensive plan of the noise level, the traffic, kind of exterior of the campus, but also interior. That's definitely something we would look at and absolutely take into consideration, definitely.
Okay. All right. If everybody's set, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, will approval of the entertainment license for Merrimack College for the Church of Christ Church?
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It is a unanimous vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Have a good evening, stay warm.
And Merrimack continues to do well.
So do I.
No, no, I was talking about.
As an alum?
Both, no, I was referring to sports, but well in general is good too.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, have a good night.
I will entertain a motion to move out of licensing.
I'll move to close the meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are now out of licensing. Here's the gavel.
We are moving on to governmental reports now. And item A is an update on the Merrimack Valley Relief Funds and I will turn it over to Tommy Andrew Rodriguez.
So as you probably remember, back when the lawsuit was settled with Columbia Gas and the Attorney General, the town was granted one point five million dollars to use towards municipal energy projects. And that money is administered through the Attorney General's office. So we've been working with them on a project to spend those funds. And what we did first was we initiated a study of all of our different buildings to come up with what would be the best possible project. With, one of the tasks that they really gave us was that they wanted it to be one big project. They didn't want to see us install thirty-seven different small things. They wanted something that was gonna be really impactful. So we kind of boiled it down to two projects and then decided on one, which we want to tell you about today, and that is electrifying the youth center. So we're pretty excited about that project. As you know, it's a fifteen thousand square foot facility built in nineteen ninety-nine. They will, when they do the design of the electricity, account for the design of the addition as well. So it kind of gets that rolling too, which is pretty exciting. Currently, it has seven gas-fired DX furnace units, which you're gonna be shocked are not entirely efficient. So, and there are five additional carrier units and it's not very well zoned and it's all at the end of life. So this is a pretty huge project for us. The other project that we were talking about was the high school. We would only be able to do a small portion of that project. This project, we're able to do the entire thing. Yeah, so we're really excited about this project. Rick's really excited about it too. So that's what we're gonna bring forward. And one thing that they did note in the report is that this is an extremely good candidate, this project. And actually that the high use, it's that the usage is so high that it even warrants kind of investigation to see if there's something crazy going on. So we're excited to be able to kind of tackle this with that money. Um, so we're excited to be able to kind of tackle this with that money.
So you say electrify.
I know, it's kind of scary.
All of the utilities, we follow the.
We're going to go away from gas and go to electric.
Solar on that building? I mean, is that part of it?
So we. Right, it's it's an open, the the, um. Originally, they they told us to comply with green communities, that the regulations were really going to be green communities. And, um, green communities, shockingly, doesn't really cover, um, solar, which is weird. But, um, they have told us that they would include solar as part of this project. They would consider solar as part of this project. So, um, we are also planning on, uh, doing solar on this as well. So I mean, I I think it's going to be a pretty amazing project. Um, and I think it's going it's going to end up in huge cost savings for us. Um, which is good. So that's our plan for that money.
Thank you.
Good plan.
Steve Foster's very excited as well, as you can imagine.
He does get excited.
He does get like that.
That's a pretty cool product.
Anything techy or.
Can they incorporate a cell phone tower so these poor kids can contact their parents from the youth center?
We're going to have the charging bench soon, so you can.
It's not useful, but.
You can charge, but you just can't make it call.
We're parents.
Jackson's, I was like, oh, how long have you been here? I'm like, ten minutes. I'm trying to get into.
It is really a tough spot.
Tough spot.
Yeah. I'm sure all the kids use as an excuse.
Yes.
Anything I'm missing?
I didn't know you were here.
I can promise for that.
Anything I'm missing about the project?
No, I just I think the AG's Office and, um, DOE are really excited because they see a learning aspect to this. And they're hoping that it will get kids excited about renewable energy and possibly, you know, careers in it. And so they look at it as a big funding project too. So.
That's neat. Uh, yeah, I think that's true. Spark some interest. Very good.
Does that include a look at, obviously, we'll have to look at the roof to support the new solar.
We have to make sure of the roof.
Support of the solar, yeah, for sure.
And we don't.
Or a new roof.
The funding would be there.
Or they put a new roof.
And then the solar.
Because the solar's on top.
Yeah. Oh, I was thinking underneath too, like the rafters and stuff.
Yeah.
If it needs support, the weight.
The hit the weight, yeah, snow and.
Yeah.
Solar panels kicking it heavy, maybe.
If there's not enough funding for the solar or if the roof wouldn't support the solar, then we would make sure that it basically equips that we equip with solar in the future.
In the future, okay.
Especially on the addition.
Yeah.
So.
That's exciting.
What is sort of, what do you think the timeline will be, just out of curiosity? How does it play in with facilities master plan?
You know how we work in doggies?
I mean.
Other agencies do as well, so it's a little slow.
But when you combine those doggies, you're like looking at.
Uh, it's a little bit slow, but we're all working very collaboratively and well together. So we're just going to keep on plugging it, right?
Yeah.
Put them in the morning and let them know that the decision this was the decision we decided to go. I'm sure they'll be very happy. And then we'll just hopefully.
Plug along.
Get started on with the design.
Okay, I understand. All right. Item B, the update on the use of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Grant, and we will turn it over to D Casey to update us.
Sure, sure. So we received a grant, um. To look at several different aspects of what we're doing in the community for diversity, equity, inclusion. And what the scope of this is to, you know, understand what the barriers are to access for community members, identify any language or communication needs for residents, identify how to foster engagement, review policies and procedures and any root causes that might inhibit community engagement, and identifies opportunities for, uh, becoming a more inclusive town and better serve all residents, and also get some, um, advice and input on how to best structure any Diversity Equity and Co- Inclusion Commission or Committee or Task Force that they think would suit our needs. Any questions?
When will we? I guess when will we hear back?
So we have the scope of services as complete has been completed. Um, you know, Laurie has vetted it. We just need to put it out so that we can get, uh, quotes back, and then we'll engage with a consultant. Um, I think we've we were looking for November timeframe to get some sort of report back. Uh, we don't want it lingering out there forever and would like to really get back to the work that we had started in twenty twenty.
Appreciate that.
Yes. This is exciting. It'd be nice to. I'm sure you want to see some movement.
Yeah, I'm very excited about it. Thank you.
A little tricky.
Tricky, yeah. So.
Appreciate that. Thank you for the update. Okay, we have already taken care of the consent items, so moving on to the approval of minutes from the open session of December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Has everybody reviewed? Okay, take your time. Yes. There was a big meeting.
I am good with it. Um, so I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the meeting from December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. I don't see any items under old business or do you have old business or Town Managers Report or?
I'm just going to show from the, um, rooftop again about Jean Enright being the employee of the year because it makes me so happy.
So, um, that's all I've got, but I'm very excited about Jean.
I agree. I feel like we should have maybe, I don't know, we should have planned better for her appearance tonight.
I feel like a sting of innovation or something. Yes, I know.
It was caught off guard that she was here.
I know. It makes me so happy and it's so well deserved.
But she's kind of shy.
She is.
This is meaningful for her, I think.
It really is.
We teased her enough.
Yes. So, no, I'm so happy for her and it's such a well deserved. And she really got so many nominations from so many different departments, which just goes to show just how amazing she is. So.
That's great.
Yeah, so it's great.
And I can just say I serve with Jean on at least four boards right now. So she is, um, really a centerpiece of all of them. So, uh, afford maybe three. Affordable Housing Trust, the Mass Plan Implementation Committee, and the four hundred Great Pond Road Committee. And she's just a, um, a superstar in all of them, so.
She does her homework. Truly is. Awesome. Very good. Um, selectmen updates? Anybody have?
Well, since I mentioned the four hundred Great Pond Road Steering Committee, um, I can give a quick update on that.
That would be great.
Um, we've had actually four meetings, four published meetings. Two of them were site visits to four hundred Great Pond Road. Um, we had two because some of us couldn't make the first one. Um, so we had, um, a second site visit. The first meeting, of course, was a, um, a kind of a, um, a get-to-know-each-other meeting, uh, was in this room. Uh, we had all, uh, actually Chief Weir couldn't make it that night, but we had the other ten members of the committee in attendance. I think it's going to be a really good committee with a lot of diverse and and, uh, well-informed opinions. Um, and then the second meeting was the site visit. Um, and then then we had a second, no, then we had a meeting to kind of ha- um, discuss next steps. Uh, so some of the next steps we're talking about is doing a survey, uh, to the public, uh, having, uh, inviting the public. And of course, the public meetings, so the public's always invited, but having the public come in specifically to provide input. Um, one of the things we did, um, was we reached out to Fran Murphy, who had just moved a house on, um, Ste- on, um, on Salem Street. So we asked him on our second site visit, he ju- he joined us on the second site visit, just to give us some insights on what it takes to move a historical house, um, which is really, really good. And so he's going to actually come in, because there were only a couple of us on that second site visit. So he's going to come into our next meeting, which is tomorrow night, and he's going to, you know, answer any questions and kind of give some of his thoughts about what it, you know, not that we're going to move it, but, you know, nothing's off the table right now. And that's kind of been, um, the charge of the group is that, you know, let's look at all possibilities. Not don't commit with any preconceived notions of what we're going to do with that building or what we're going to do with that location. So, um, nothing's off the table right now. The goal is to have, um, something prepared for town meeting so we can, um, have some kind of an article on town meeting to move forward, uh, whether it's, you know, whatever. I won't even give any ideas right now because we're going to have a brainstorming session as well. So all of that's going to start happening tomorrow night.
You know who else moved a building was the private red by from the old center to the farm.
Yep, yep, they did. And the one, um, you know, and, um, the house on Great Pond Road, um, that was moved from Great Pond Road over to Academy Road. But the reason I I asked Fran to come in.
It literally just happened.
And he gave us some insights, you know, just things you would never think about, like, do you want to keep the chimneys or you want to take them down? Because the chimneys make a big difference in the movement of a house. Um, how are you going to? And he also gave some great thoughts about, you know, what we can do with the utilities in that house if we wanted to, you know, change the way the utilities are currently are in the basement. So there was a lot of good feedback in there. And he's, like I said, and and we have a lot of good people on that that committee, including Mr. Foster and others, um, that, um, I think will will come up with some good ideas, hopefully.
Appreciate that update. It's nice to hear what's going on. Anybody else? Okay. No further comments. I will, um, our next meeting will be on, what is it, January twenty-fifth? On Wednesday, January twenty-fifth at seven PM, and I will take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion.
You have.
Sorry, um, we received a notification to come for an entertainment license. We're working at Stevens College, uh, but you don't seem to have made the agenda, um, so just wanted to follow up on that.
Suzanne have requested our presence here of the expansion of our entertainment.
Okay. So you're not on our agenda, so we can't talk to you. But they'll figure out what.
Did I miss that?
I know. I was like, did I skip something? But, um, but we'll we'll have a discussion after to to figure out what. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
We have another hand up.
Yeah.
Oh, four.
Main Street Lakers.
So who will be on the twenty?
I I understanding you were scheduled for the twenty-fifth, which is a Wednesday.
The last meeting, we said this meeting, but did we follow up and said the twenty-fifth? Okay. Okay, so I'm going to adjourn the meeting. I have a motion. I need a second to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.